Order of Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call.
Ms. Alling is here, Ms. Benham time.
Here.
Ms. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Jane.
Here.
Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Samuel Lamb.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Alright, next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion, is there a second? A second, let's fold.
Who is the motion made by?
Hammond.
Thank you.
Motion carries six zero. Next, public announcements, recognition, upcoming events.
Uh, we do have a lot going on right before the holidays here, so we have had three concerts in the last month since our board meeting in November, most recently, um, with a nice, uh, band concert on this past Monday night, uh, that Mrs. Leahy and three really different bands, uh, put on for, for parents and the community, so that was really nice. Uh, speaking of the band, they, uh, had put on the Big Band Bash, um, right after our last board meeting on November fifteenth, uh, Saturday night. Mr. Schwartz is here, he once again represented the district at Old Fashioned Christmas as the Grinch, so if you do see any social media pictures of the Grinch, that is, uh, Mr. Schwartz underneath that costume, making sure everybody feels welcome, a lot of photo opportunities for Mr. Schwartz there. Uh, a nice piece that, uh, was in the local, uh, TV news on our green team, they had presented at the Wisconsin Youth Climate Conference, and then, um, their, the, the news story was about that, but it was actually the Evansville Presentation Board that at, was in the background of this news piece, so, uh, nice, uh, nice recognition for the green team. We also had a, a great presentation by the UW Whitewater Wheelchair Basketball Team, that was the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. They came to Levi and Tris, we combined, uh, the two schools in the old gym here and had a, a one presentation and then, uh, transferred everything over to the middle school, we had another presentation, uh, just some good lessons about, um, acceptance, uh, overcoming adversity, and of course, whenever you get, uh, kids and then adults out in those wheelchairs, uh, I will say by far, the kids were much better than the adults in the wheelchairs when it got to be, uh, playing basketball against each other. Uh, also, congratulations to Brooklyn Maeve, she, uh, is one of the few people in, uh, Blue Devil history to score a thousand points. If you took that out, if you played twenty-two games a year, over four years, she's not done yet, you'd have to have about ten points every single game to get to that point, and of course, she scored more than that, um, uh, it was on varsity as a freshman, so congratulations to Brooklyn, uh, and, and that accomplishment. Uh, had parent-teacher conferences at the high school, and then also the madrigal dinner last, uh, Saturday night, um, as well for the choirs. Coming up, uh, just tomorrow night, if you've never seen it before, it's pretty cool, uh, Tris, uh, uh, and Maggie will put on, you met Maggie, actually, she talked about all the, uh, training that she had had and the drumming, the school district had helped put her through, so you'll see some of that with the Tris drumming and xylophone concert tomorrow night. There'll be another, uh, next, um, actually, I, I think I got that right, middle school choir concert on the fifteenth. And then, of course, there's quite a long break this year, just depending on where the holidays, uh, fall, so we'll have a longer break. Um, there is a staff work day on the second, which is that Friday. Um, we'll talk a little bit more next month about school board recognition month, and then, uh, we also have another choir concert coming up in January as well, so a lot going on before the holidays.
Alright, does anybody have any other announcements, recognitions? If not, is there any public comment? Alright, moving on to high school board reps report.
It's Tessa and Daniel come up, I did put something in the board packet because we had just mentioned the green team and they were on the, uh, Facebook page. Always seem to be in the same pictures together, so, um, uh, that, that was on, uh, uh, the, the Facebook page for the district, just, I think, within the last week here, a week and a half or so, so, turn it over to them.
Okay, cool, we're gonna start things off in Levi, um, you can see, um, everyday kids do some math. Or Ms. Lous class, with some of their math work for the day. Um, and then kind of, over to the other side, um, second grade is learning about ancient Greek civilization at the moment, um, so one of their lessons was on the first Olympics and the creation of the Olympics, so, as kind of, I think for that they did potato Olympics, so each kid got a potato and decorated it, and they did kind of different games, you know, balancing games and hot potato and such, um, and this one is a picture of potato shot put, so it was all outside, um, and each kid lined up and people, but, some potatoes did not survive, so, it's tragic. Um, and then, of course, there's lots of artwork, um, play around for the holidays, some festive stuff, um, and then kindergarten, just lots of fun playtime and activities with building blocks and fun stuff.
At the Tris, the, one of the first classrooms we went to was the music class, who was working on their drumming in preparation for their concert tomorrow, from what we heard, they were actually sounding pretty good, so clearly she's doing a good job at with those lessons she was getting. And then, we went to see Ms. Greavy and her third grade class, who, they were just coming back from their lunch and their recess, so they were just having some quiet reading time before they moved into their studies about the body and anatomy, which they had seemed to be working on for a couple of weeks. Um, and then outside of Ms. Greavy's room, they had a board that is displayed here with the latte cups and on, they're called the Thanks-a-Latte, and each student wrote what they were thankful for on the cups, and then, as you mentioned, they had the wheelchair basketball conference about.
Alright, moving on to the middle school, um, the seventh grade English classes were doing some fun little activities before starting, so we have Ms. Baumberger's class, they were doing a round of scatagories before getting started for the day, and then Ms. Putnam's class was just starting an escape room when we walked in, so we didn't get to see the outcome, but it was always fun. And then we have a picture of the wheelchair basketball, um, some of the students doing some of it, um, in front of me, I don't think that got it there, but. Um, and then, in the spirit of giving, um, lots of the grade were doing some things to give back to the Evansville community, so the sixth grade was having, um, a fundraiser, they can see it's kind of like a low thermometer, and then some of like, uh, money amount had little kind of rewards, but at the tippy-top one, it was to be able to pie three teachers in the face. Getting close, I'm not sure if they got it or not, but, and then, the annual eighth grade penny war, um, just finished up, so they raised just over about a thousand dollars, um, for the toys, some of the toys that they got, so, it's amazing, and then you have Ms. Schwartz, already decorating for Christmas, in the spirit, it's amazing.
Did they get to pay the teachers?
I think they did, yeah.
Um, and then at the high school, as mentioned, recently, the EHS green team took part in a climate conference, um, to work with other schools in order to get a sense of how we're doing to improve our green efforts, which I would like to say are going very well, because we see it every day, and, um, then also what the green team members can do to continue to grow that effort under the leader of Mr. Anderson. And, um, under Tessa's leadership, we have been changing the lights in the school to LED lights, so we actually do those on Tuesdays, we just did them yesterday. We do two to three lights at a time, and that's the photo you were referencing on the Facebook page. And then, Future Business Leaders of America did their annual gift wrapping at the pharmacy during Old Fashioned Christmas, although this year it was not very booming like it was last year, it was still a lot of fun, we got to interact with the community and some Grinchy people. It was very fun, and it's nice to work with the people who are in charge of the pharmacy and work at the pharmacy, because they're people we've interacted with before, we know from school, and just a way to just have fun on Friday night that you might always, not, might not always get. And then, during the month of November, Ms. Gala hosted a November, each day having different questions that students could answer, in hopes of getting it, of winning a week's worth of flex in the library with her, which, if you're unfamiliar, it's amazing in the library with her, because she has snacks, she's always very kind and thoughtful to the, her students, it's always ve- very warm, quiet and cozy to be in there, and I'm guessing that's why she won the staff of the week thing, which is something that the teachers pass around. It's like, hey, I recognize you for everything you've been doing for the students, for the school and, in general, and Ms. Gala got to keep it an extra two days for the, two days before Thanksgiving break, and then she passed it along to the next staff, which I believe in, was Mr. Anderson. And then, we also have down that Brooklyn Maeve's entered the thousand-point club, just to give her recognition from our side as well, that it's a very big accomplishment and they were, it was very live on Facebook about it, all the parents on, of the basketball girls were very happy for her.
That is all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Your suit is pretty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, really. I'm not. He went better, oh my gosh.
That's awesome.
Good luck with your meeting. Your creative writing and literary studies are great classes.
Alright, moving on, District Administrators' report.
Um, Paige wants to open up the very bottom of that first piece where it says, uh, Mr. Schwartz's more detailed presentations linked here. Um, first thing that we wanted to cover is, we talk a lot about academic data, which is certainly important, uh, but one of the things that we wanted to touch on, now that we've done this about three years in a row, is how our students are doing with their mental health, do they feel connected to our, to their, uh, school and their teachers and their classmates, and then how are they feeling when they're at school, do they feel safe, do they feel accepted? And so, um, I'll, I'll pass it over to Mark here, I think one of the challenges when you get the scores that we have now and you go back and look at previous scores, which are also linked, um, in my document, is how do you keep them at this level, because, uh, they've gone up every time that we have surveyed from twenty-three to twenty-five, so, pass it over to Mark for a minute, yeah.
Yeah, as you can see, we have four, four prompts, um, and we're hoping to see students select, agree or strongly agree. There is a bit of a tweak this year as compared to the two previous years listed, and then, we did, we just kind of rephrased that trusted adult piece. Um, just some feedback we'd gotten through the years about, you know, if I, if I'm at school and something's bothering me, I've got someone to talk to, and we've, some feedback we've received is, well, just talk to somebody at home, um, and that doesn't necessarily mean they don't have a trusted adult, it's, adult at school, we just wanted to be more clear in what we are asking, so we, we tweaked that a bit, and typically, what the, uh, what, what the principals and their leaderships, leadership teams do is they look at that data, um, they identify a specific area, um, sometimes some action steps, and maybe even some specific students, and, and try to, try to grow that area, and that tends to be the one. Um, and as you can see, we've seen some great growth year to year and, and over the years, so we'll do this again as, as May and June arrive. Um, we do wait, I think I had that in my memo as well, but we do wait until the first quarter is coming to a close, we're, we're getting a real look at what's going on this year and how kids feel about this year. Um, but really, like, like Mr. Perry said, it's some great data, and, um, in addition to trying to, to grow that data, we're hoping to maintain it as well, because it's really good, good-looking data, the first two were specific to student engagement and belonging, I spoke to the trusted adult one, and the third one is more about that, that academic rigor end and how students feel about that.
Any questions on this?
Um, so I remember, I, you mentioned that the middle school was the area that was struggling the most with the trusted adult. Makes sense to me if I remember any of the middle school, but, um, I'm curious, uh, do we have the, uh, the data broken down by schools, come in, it seems like the other schools must be doing tremendously well, and I'd love to see it.
The schools do have that, broken down by, by school, by grade level, and, and if, if, if interested, they can go into students, you know, and, and identify which students they might want to reach out to in different ways, so.
So we do get some, I, I would call them red flags, and so the counselors, uh, are looking at those to see if there's a student that really seems to be struggling, calling it, and that's where you're gonna get some of that specific feedback that Mark mentioned, well, I answered it this way, because I do have somebody to talk to, but it, I would talk to my parent or I'd talk to my sister instead.
Is this one of the data points that will go out to parents, or no?
Uh, typically, we haven't shared this, like, publicly, although, um, uh, when we do the school perceptions, they fill out something similar to that, based on what their students tell them.
Okay, the only reason I ask is I just remember on one of the, one of the bigger points that I think, and concerns were, were around, um, bullying, and then I think, if I remember correctly, and I could be totally off, is, um, some of the concerns with the bullying was, how is it handled within the school, like, what type of support do they get? It would be nice for parents to know, um, that they feel, like, just like linking it to this somehow, uh, and I don't know how you would do, but it's just nice to see, you know, the, that there's trust, they feel trusted, I don't know how you could link that, but just so.
Well, I do have, I'll connect with Mark, because, um, the new, December newsletter goes out next Thursday before, try not to send those out on a Friday, or they'll get lost with kids sometimes. Um, and, and this is one thing that I think we could promote.
Yeah, and it's just nice knowing, just because I know that was a big topic last year, for parents to know that their, their kids do have someone trusted, since last year, that was a big topic.
I feel like I'm a part of the school, ninety-two percent, that's awesome, I mean, all of these numbers are great.
Yeah.
And it just speaks to the staff, yeah, just totally.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
If you go back, Paige, um, in terms of family and community partnerships, uh, one thing that I thought was really helpful is at the last Becoming Better Neighbors meeting, they had invited in Jeanette Jones from the Care Closet, and we had a conversation about how the two groups could help one another, and I learned quite a bit, not that I didn't know what the Care Closet did, but having her there at a meeting, we had her for about an hour that particular night, uh, we talked about a couple of things, one, um, which I actually reached out to Heather Butch and about this is, um, you know, s- maybe some senior projects, although Jean, uh, Jeanette was very specific that, um, she doesn't want to have to tell the students, she wants a motivated student that already has an idea and not create something for them, so, there's certainly some opportunity there. Um, there's also opportunity for some of our students to do some, uh, volunteering, but again, they're only open certain hours, so it kind of narrows who we could have do that. The biggest thing where I think we could make an impact, is sometimes the Care Closet is looking for very specific items. It's been a while now since I've had to buy baby formula and, and diapers, but I remember how expensive those were, and of course, if, um, i- if the Care Closet has those, it'd be a very specific kind of drive that you're looking for that, the other thing that they sometimes run short on is personal hygiene products, shampoo, soap, uh, shower gel, deodorant, toothpaste, those kinds of things, so, uh, we will connect with Jeanette, and both student councils at the middle school and the high school are fantastic, I know they do some of this anyway. The pictures that you see there were actually from about this time last year, when the middle school went off and dropped off some donations to the Care Closet, so, I learned a lot, and again, was able to make a connection of what they might need that we might be able to help with. On, on that last page, I just want to point out some of the good work that our counselors are doing, um, again, they don't have to do this, but, uh, Amy Swartout and Alicia Zalkowski on our workday on January second, are putting on a youth mental health first aid class, having gone through that class before. It's not like our staff is solely responsible for somebody, let's say, that might be suicidal and they're, you know, they're, they're, it's all on them, what it does do is it makes them aware of warning signs, it provides some resources, it, it, uh, gives them some guidance about how to deal with individual situations to get them to the right person, whether it be our counselors or even a call to like Child Protective Services, those kinds of things, or the police, um, and so, they'll put that on, there's a, there's a little bit of pre-work that needs to be done for those that sign up, uh, but they were willing to do that on the workday, and, uh, some of our staff are taking advantage of that, which is just a good resource for staff to, uh, wanna connect, you saw about the connectedness of our students have with our staff, and so there's, uh, that, that will run on the second. I also wanted to, um, just fill in the board, uh, so Alice is something that is pretty expensive training, so Alice is our alert, lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate, uh, kind of, school violence, uh, protocols, so last May, we had sent, I think it was six different staff members, so we had every building represented, um, down to Illinois to do some training right at the end of that month before school got out, and then those staff members came back, uh, to do some of that work with their staff, just to give them the latest updates. We'll talk about like, school, um, safety drills, and one of the things that you'll see with the high school drill, it was much different this year than it has been in years past, I think because of that training. So, um, we have volunteered to put on that training in the second week of June, um, school, summer school has not started yet, the building's open, checked with Kendall, we've got a great space in the meteor room that they can use for instruction, and then they simply need a hallway with a number of classes there, which will go upstairs, actually to the English hallway, and use that hallway, um, at that time, and if we get a number of outside registrants, then we get our own free, uh, staff to participate, which is, again, we could always use to have more trained in that, so we're looking forward to that, um, I'll be getting updates from Eva, who's our contact there, about how many are, uh, signed up. I did, in my own contact group, so the Rock County Superintendent's, the Rock Valley Superintendent's, even the Dane County Superintendent's, um, usually you have to go quite a ways for this training, I think Jeff and I were talking last year, it was either in Illinois or all the way into northern Wisconsin, so, it'll be nice to have a, a training session around this part of the state at that time. I think the next closest are over in the Milwaukee area and then up in the Fox Valley, so it would provide, uh, an opportunity around Madison.
Do they get like a certificate?
They do, yeah, yeah, and then.
How long is that certificate for?
I think it's three years, but then you, you are, uh, it's like a train the trainer, so then you could be a trainer for your own staff when you go back with them.
So, would we, uh, keep up with that certificate?
We have, the one thing that has, uh, happened is you can do some of that training online, so for example, Mark Doran chose that option last time. Um, that's a good question, I don't know if it's costless to do it online, certainly more convenient, because it's two-day training, and for us, usually it involves, if it's a drive, it's also a hotel stay then. And then finally, um, uh, things had started to move with our roofs, so we did get our, our actual cash value check, which I had mentioned to the board briefly, we got our actual cash value check for our uh, roofs, all four campuses, um, right about a month ago, and then, uh, as the work progresses, we'll get two more checks, uh, nearly complete, and then a final, uh, check. What this allowed us to do is, when we did the bidding for this, uh, there were three bids that were submitted, uh, Pioneer was one of those, FJA Christensen was another, and then, um, uh, Jackson Associates was a third, we were hoping for a fourth, but that one didn't come in, and so, then the insurance company said, hey, we like this Pioneer, um, bid, it was one that we were comfortable working with Pioneer, in fact, they'd done some of our repairs, um, in about the last year and a half or so, and so you started to see some of that, and then, of course, the snow hit, there's two things that can happen. Um, either you can pay to have the snow removed to continue to work, or you can just shut down the project and then pick it up in the spring. I think you'll see a lot of activity in the spring and next summer, I think we'll have as many as three crews here, working on the buildings, that hopefully, uh, we can get all that done. I do think we'll probably have some of the high school work lingering into the fall, um, because it's a two-story building over there, you're not gonna have some of like the tar fumes that, um, we had here that we were trying to work around at that time, so, um, things are underway, uh, Eric just got the last two contracts signed, so we're locked in at that price, which aligns with our insurance settlement, the great thing is there, if you look into Garland, um, Garland will give us a thirty-year guarantee on those roofs, so that means not only, usually you get a five-years ma- five-year manufacturer warranty, but because the, um, excuse me, a five-year, um, uh, construction warranty, but because they're using these products, um, they'll guarantee that work for up to thirty years, so the great thing for us is if we ever have a problem, we call our Garland rep, they'll come over and get a contractor to fix that roof, so it really should set up the district for a long time to come, happy about that, and uh, we just, again, locked in those last two contracts for the spring, so we know the prices won't go up, for anybody in the trades, usually July, January first, you're paying more for materials and then more for labor for the following year.
Alright, is there any other questions for Mr. Perry on his report? If not, new discussion on, uh, discussion on new course proposals.
Do we, uh, Mr. Willauer could make it tonight, so, Mark, do you, you wanna split that one with me?
I can help with it.
You wanna do it, okay, so, uh, first of all, just a general comment on, on the new courses, if it seems like now this will be the second, third and fourth courses, this is a lot. I think you've got a combination of things happening, when you had the failed referendum, and then a referendum that passes in the middle of the year, as you know, that we couldn't make a lot of staffing changes, you're starting to see some of the positive effects of that now, um, you're also seeing the hiring of two new tech ed teachers, um, and some of the things that they're seeing, and Jeff may speak to this, but what I see is, they're analyzing what the pro, what kind of state the program is in right now, and then trying to make some changes for the following year that will benefit our students, and then they're seeing maybe where there are some gaps, or maybe even some, um, uh, kind of doubling up of things. So, the first one that's up there is for a basic home and auto maintenance class, so we've got all kinds of very specific courses in tech ed, a lot of them are like engineering-related, and this is one that if I could go back, uh, especially like changing my own oil and oil filter, I probably could go back and take this class, same thing like, um, rather than having to pay an electrician to be able to rewire, whether it's a plug or an outlet, same thing they do, I know they'll do some work with, um, drywall patching, um, those kinds of things, so this really will be a, a hands-on, practical course, that they also hope might get in some of your non-traditional tech ed students that just wanna try out a course, and so, uh, we, we're also hoping that that opens up, um, some students looking at that course and saying, hey, now that I've kind of gotten used to it, some of the teachers, I'd like to take another one, I, I see.
I think this would be a graduation plan.
I see, uh.
Absolutely.
Uh, I see up there the plumbing, and I don't wanna go too much in, but I have four daughters, and if I were to have to call a plumber every time I took off a trap to get long hair out of it, I would be spending hundreds of dollars a year, at least I know how to do those sorts of things, which of course, they'll go over as well.
I think if you add tax classes and how to fill out W two.
I agree with that as well.
I, I was thinking the same thing when I read this, every kid have this, it's like, they used to have this thing where they went through, um, and they had to like go through a, a simulation of real life, they had to go buy their insurance, and, you know, they cut their salary every month, and if they ran out before they buying all their required items, then they were like, kind of, S O L, and, I, I thought that should be a required thing too.
It's like, how to assess, is this a good car to buy, is this a, is this a reasonable mortgage? Is this a reasonable mortgage? Like, those are such valuable life skills.
Does that happen in personal finance?
I don't know, but...
Mortgage and, right. So, I want to be careful, like this isn't going to cover all of the things of money, but this will be maybe more hands-on, the actual doing of the thing.
Yeah.
And that was the piece I was going to comment on, is I think it pairs real well with personal finance, but it is very much the hands-on piece of what it to do with.
They both have taught a class similar to this in their previous districts, and so they were kind of combining things they both did in other districts and making a new hybrid, what they call a better version of what they want to make it, because they were able to more create it on their own. So, they were both on board and excited with getting this. I know from talking with Mr. Willhauer a lot about just the adjustments that we're trying to do down there. His big goal is to get more of the non-traditionals, or in his words, also like some more females down there, because there's just not a lot down there. So, he's trying to introduce classes and stages where, like this is kind of that first one of, okay, let's get them introduced down to the shop and the area, and then maybe pull them into some other things as they're going through high school. So, they kind of have a big goal in mind of adjusting a lot of stuff, but this is kind of the first stage of, they're trying to figure out all the equipment we have. I mean, he's still getting equipment up and running that. Down there that they're trying to figure out how it works, how to use it, and then incorporate it into the curriculum. We had a lot of machines that weren't in any of our curriculum, we just hacked. So, now they're doing all that, so now the classes are going to get adjusted, and this is kind of that first phase of, this is something they both were passionate about, they've taught it, they're kind of recreating it here and trying to get more students into it. This particular one's a lot of hands-on stuff of just basic life skills you need to do if you're owning a home, a car, or all those things, or renting, it doesn't matter, just all the stuff you do as an adult that you don't necessarily know what to do unless someone tells you.
Home stuff your landlord bought you.
Or you don't have to tell your landlord if in college you put a hole in your apartment, you can fix it on yourself.
I think it's, I think that's...
Keep your security deposits.
Yeah. I think that's wonderful, and I think we should do things like that. I just have a question, because I don't fully understand, what are the, are there any risks as far as, and by risk, I mean, not really risk, but potential cost association or takeaways from classes we're offering in that aspect? Is the...
Cost, not any more than what they would just have in their budget anyway. So, like if you have, they're just, you know, the students that sign up for it, instead of running another class that would have ran, this class will run, and the budget that would have been used to support that class, because every tech ed class has a budget which costs something to do, will just be put into this class. So, there's not going to be any more cost to run the stuff. And a lot of the stuff they'll use for that class are going to have sitting around.
And the class we're taking from, are we losing anything essential that we needed?
No, we probably, it'll just be less sections of stuff possibly, but we had some classes this year because of the transition that only had like 10 or 12 kids in it. So, that would be one section, instead of two sections of 12, it'll be one section of 24, and then this class will have another set of kids in it.
And we're not duplicating anything in this class that we're kind of covering?
Correct. We don't, I mean, the only part, some of the oil changes and stuff like that get covered in the auto mechanic stuff. I mean, they go way more depth, and that's like a time frame there, where this one will be probably a whole class period. So, it'll be taught at a little different pace.
And I don't know all of this stuff, sorry, so that's what I'm asking.
And I was just going to speak to your cost question as well. That my, through my budget, we have some summer curricular hours. And what we do is I'll work with each of the four principals, bring approaches to identify needs, and this would certainly be on our radar for the teachers to work together and build those courses, given the kind of costs around textbooks or digital resources or anything like that. But some of those summer hours identified is what they need to make sure they have the time.
So, when you say your summer budget, you mean pulling from your summer budget to help?
Yes, I have a budget set aside for summer curricular work and identify the needs in each building, and in this case, that would be my work. And I know we're going to be talking about three different course requests this evening. The part that I would want to stress is, and Mr. Kendall will do as well, our courses are filled based on student request. We will know prior to the spring what those requests look like.
Sure.
And whether we'll take the time this summer to build it, to put those hours in, and we will align that to when those courses do fit.
Okay. So, just for clarification, so I understand, is the summer hours you're talking about are the hours to build the course during the summer?
Yes, yes.
Got it.
Should we run a course?
Okay, okay, got it.
And I say that about all three.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding all three and regarding like killing two birds with one stone, how can we promote this? Because I would have encouraged all of my children to take a class like this out into the community, not only as another opportunity for your kids, but our tax dollars being used the way we told them, told you that we're going to be using them, for all three courses.
Like adding courses back since we passed a referendum?
Yes. Good question. I think our staff has done a pretty good job this year of promoting what is happening in everything that you, I shouldn't say everything, but a lot of what you see on Facebook is coming from our principals just reminding our staff about the opportunity to send that into social school for EDU. And this would be another opportunity, when you do get a hands-on lesson, whether it's, again, plumbing, electrical, drywall, auto, to take a few pictures and promote that out in the community. Because I really think we're in a much better spot where we were right after that referendum passed, where we only had one tech ed teacher and what that program looks like now compared to a year ago.
We will send out to parents around the time that kids are making those initial requests for, when they're expressing their interest, to say, just so you know, your kids are going to be picking the classes they're interested in, here are some new ones that you might want to discuss them taking.
I'll have to look, because we haven't had new classes in a while, to see if we've added, like if we've ever put in, these are the new classes. I know the new classes are all in the course guide, because I went, just went through the course guide like 10 times to go through stuff, and still probably missed stuff. But there's, so they're always in there, and our kids are pretty savvy about looking through the course guide, because we don't really promote study halls, they have to go through extra hoops to get a study hall. So, they usually go through the course guide really good to find classes that might interest them. So, this will be one that's in there. But I'll have to check with our counselors to see if they've ever sent anything out in the past, and then maybe make that suggestion, that maybe they highlight that somewhere in their email they send out that, you know, here are some new courses for the next school year that you may not know we have.
And for the kids, Jeff, I think they're, some of the departments create videos about what kind of course they'll bring.
Yeah, they typically do that, and I know the tech ed is, there's a lot of adjustments in there, so there's a lot of kids who will look through that, because they know there's new stuff going on down there. You get to the high school, we can't promote it very well because of the regulations with Disney, but we have our new large format printer that just printed an awesome Disney poster for our musical. So, it was the stuff we were allowed to print, but you can print it and you can post it in your school, but you can't put it on social media. So, it's posted in our comments, it's a huge poster that they made down there that looked really good. So, next time you're up in high school, look over towards the P A C, and you'll see an awesome poster that we made in tech ed down there. I didn't help at all with it. That's just part of the stuff that people are starting to see. He's now printing all the senior banners, so he did those this week as well. So, the wrestling ones just got done this week that he had printed. So, he's been doing that down there. So, we're starting to, some of the stuff we were outsourcing is now staying in-house with some of the new stuff. And both Mr. Willhauer and some of the kids now are learning how to do that stuff. Well, Mr. Willhauer knows how to do it, but the kids are starting to learn how to do that as well down there.
I would think, just to follow up, that the, you know, the English course is probably the ones that I would, I could see, anyone who took Creative Writing 1 and loved it is going to spot Creative Writing 2 and say, this is really exciting. But if we're trying to attract kids who have, who are not drawn to, you know, the internal combustion engines and power mechanics, you know, so like they might veer away from the tech ed section generally. So, I mean, I would love to let parents know, so that they can maybe give a little nudge to those kids that we're trying to encourage, to say, hey, you should show up and you might...
And that's, I'll talk to the counselors, because I think it's good to put those little things in the emails out to parents. And then, I know when we're doing some registration, a little different with your course selection, so the counselors are going to meet with the entire grade levels to go over the new stuff, as opposed to in the past, it was all done in their A C P groups. So, this will be now the counselors giving the spiel, so they'll have more control over what gets said and make sure everything's getting covered and stuff's not getting missed. So, great.
I just have one other comment, and this does not need to be discussed tonight, but I just have a question about it, and I hope we can think about it as a group later on, is I'm a big proponent of doing classes like this specifically, because I do think we should students, and coming from the higher education, I think, and my husband coming from the union side, we should develop our students to be able to go any pathway they want to. My one concern is, what are we, two years away from a referendum?
Closer to one.
One. So, I do have in the back of my mind is, how do I prepare to prepare all of us as we, I think it's great that we're in the middle of the year and we're preparing for new classes and things, just being prepared for what's to come. I just want to like think strategically, because that's like how my brain works as an H R person, is how do I strategically get all of us prepared for what's to come when we're introducing new classes, making sure like we have the right people in place? Because I know what happened last time, and I wasn't here for that. So, again, not need to discuss tonight, but just as we prepare, and I don't want to take things away from students as we do things.
And Sarah's here. I know Mark and Sarah have been working on two other courses for English. Again, Mark has already said it, but it's based on student choice, and so we'll vote on this in November, the board will. But I'll let Sarah take it away with her two courses that she's proposing.
So, Creative Writing 2 and Literary Studies 2, like except just following up with what we already have in Creative Writing and Literary Studies. Student that was in here earlier is in the middle of taking one and has taken the other one.
She needs so much now.
And was actually the one that last year had asked me if there was a two or either course. And also go and answer a question that had popped up earlier about, and I think you addressed it already, the number of courses being offered. Jeff and I had talked last year about Creative Writing 2 in particular, and also Literary Studies 2. Coming from another district, I was not certain on the process that is involved with proposing a new class. I thought it was, oh, I can go talk to Jeff about it, and we'll see how we can add that to the course catalog. And it's like, nope, it's a little bit more intense than that. So, filled out all the paperwork this year with the department. We just collaborated and highlighted a few things that we wanted to be, and we're going with that rigor idea as well.
And Ryan, I do agree, the students that would be interested in Creative Writing 2 and Literary Studies 2 are probably those kids that are gung-ho on reading and writing and English and fits their schedule. It's just additional opportunities for kids. And it's fit, it's in that skinny slot. It's really pretty easy to slide it in there, right?
It can be, yes. Last year, I actually taught it as a block. So, this year, it's set as a skinny. It's set and prepared to teach as a block as well, so it can go either direction, again, based on student interest. Then, if it's, there's enough interest, then they can put it in their schedule as the counselors and everybody on that committee that builds the schedule sees that it works.
One of the things that comes to mind, I mean, is something that the district did years ago, and maybe looking into doing, continuing to do now under duress of budgetary restrictions, is that, for example, you would go on every other year, offer the ones on the odd years and the twos on the even years, and make sure the kids know coming in as ninth graders, this is something you receive yourself to be interested in. Make sure you set aside time in your, I don't know, however the schedule works, your sophomore, junior, or junior, senior year, what have you, so that you can take these classes if it appeals to you. And they used to do that with like A P com, A P, A P, all the A Ps, because they just didn't have sufficient number of kids in one year. So, they would save up for two years and get maybe like 12 or 15 kids interested in taking an A P class, so then they could, you know, rationalize offering the class for that number of kids. Just, it was just something that was done, not sure it's being done now.
We talked about it.
A very real possibility.
Social Studies has a number of classes that are offered on even years and odd years, and it's in the course guide, so kids will know and plan.
And we just actually met with the guidance counselors the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break to discuss some of this. And what they have tentatively put in the course catalog is that Literary Studies, based on the number of students in it this year and last year, would probably not run or be available until, not this coming fall after that. So, already with the idea that that every other year balance is going to play.
I have a question. Why doesn't Creative Writing 1 count for English credit?
That's a before me thing.
It's also before me.
I'm sorry, I didn't pose this earlier.
Yeah, as I've looked at that, too, it's nine and nine honors, 10 and 10 honors, 11 and 11 honors, then you get to A P Lit, A P Lang. There must have been a decision years ago that those are going to be the requirements than anything other than that is going to be an elective. I would agree that that's not quite what I should do.
I'm wondering why.
Why? I don't know, because I do know, in looking at the course catalog when we met a few weeks ago, and having some people in our department that have gone to school here a while ago, it was ninth grade, 10th grade, and then was it junior and senior year? You kind of, you had one semester of English 11, or one semester of English 12, and your second semester was filled with something else. And you had Creative Writing, yeah, the others...
That's pretty common in other districts. There was a, I don't remember when that was, that was in 10, 11. The state changed, I think, the standards, whatever year that was, and then all the schools used to go to like 10th grade required, then like 11th and 12th grade would be like this plethora of electives you could take in English. And then, they went and said, no, you have to teach these common cores to juniors and seniors. So, then everyone had to create 11th and 12th grade English, and a lot of the electives that were there, they couldn't get English credit for, because they needed the kids to take the other ones to meet the sequencing. So, that's probably when it happened, because I was in a different district when we had to do that, where we had to, we had to add a junior English 11 and English 12, because they used to only, they used to have like eight electives they could take, and had to take four of them to get their junior, senior year, those last two years of English. And then, we couldn't allow those to count as English credit, because, or English graduation requirements. They were, the district I was in, they were still English, but they didn't count for your graduation requirement English. Your graduation requirement English, you had to have 11 and 12. So, as a counselor, I would have to look through each, I couldn't just look at the total English credits, I had to look and see, is it 11th and 12th grade English? And then, all the other elective Englishes are still English, but they didn't count towards their graduation for, if that kind of makes sense. And this system makes it simpler for our counselors, because it's not under English, it's just under an elective, and then it's just simple, are there four credits of English? Yes, or whatever they're looking at at the time.
That must make you feel really good as a teacher, that kids are wanting to take your class. That's really awesome. Good for you.
I do have a comment, but this is nothing to do with you, Sarah, it's actually maybe more toward Jeff. I'm just, I am concerned that there is a need to create classes that are skinnies. And I'm just wondering if music is the only department that's affected this way, meaning those kids need skinnies, if they're not, there's not an equitable access to all classes then. And if that's, that's more on the schedule, the block schedule and the way it's set up, than it is on the courses that we have. And I find that a little challenging as a music person to be like, you're kind of stuck taking whatever's offered as skinnies. That's my comment. I don't need an answer, if there's no, there's no question, I just want to say that.
Observation.
Observation.
Any other questions regarding new courses? If not, let's move on to, thank you.
Thank you.
District, polls 26, 27, and 27, 28, districts' calendars.
First of all, thanks to Melissa, and thanks to Hope for serving on this committee. In the past, we had just Dana on the committee, so to have two board members with some feedback was helpful. Remember when we first, last year, went to a two-year rolling calendar? We talked about the first year, so in this case, it'd be 26, 27, that we would be making very few changes to that, especially first day of school, last day of school, the major breaks like around the holidays, and then again, spring break. Because the purpose of this is to make it a planning tool for staff and of course, families around when they may be taking their own breaks and vacations. Because the purpose of this is to make it a planning tool for staff and of course, families around when they may be taking their own breaks and vacations. So the only change that you're going to see to propose, again, this will be up for vote in January, is just switching one day, and if you look in the upper right-hand corner of that, there was a professional development day that was on the 19th of October, that was proposed to move to the 30th. And then if you look in November, you've also got a compensation day for parent-teacher conferences. So you're really creating a four-day weekend for students that they wouldn't have school on Friday and then nobody would have school the following Monday. The Friday before, the 30th now, is a professional development day. What I have found as a principal and as administrator, especially when we're working around absences with families, is sometimes families will say to us, well, you know, we'd like to take some time to travel. If you give them opportunities like this, when there's four days within the school year, it lessens the impact on this because some families will say it's too expensive to travel for us to do this over spring break or winter break or the summer, where it's most expensive, we'd like to do this in a different time of year. And then you're getting those blocks of classes together. So just one switch there, stays in the same term, doesn't impact like the high school and their term count, which is important when we're looking at trying to balance how many days are in each of the high school four terms. That was the only proposed change for the first year. The second year, if you remember, will be a completely new calendar, so this is two years out, 2027, 28. And what Mark and I do as we're working with the calendar committee is we clone the year before and then basically put the same structure into place and then start, use that as a starting place. Remember, some things are not going to change. There's a 190.5-day teacher contract. The board has traditionally supported 174 and a half student contact days. There's a certain number of professional development days and then of course, holidays, there's two of those, Labor Day, Memorial Day. And then finally, I'm missing one in there, but, oh, our compensation days with parent-teacher conferences. So when we first went through this, we looked at what I would call this calendar, Calendar A. And a lot of what people do is they look like, when are kids back? When's the last day of school? We do find, I think all educators do, the longer that you go into June, there's a motivation factor there, not only for seniors, but really even for, you know, grade school kids, as the weather gets warmer, it's harder to keep them engaged as we go along. So when we first looked at this and the last day could have been on June 2nd, that seemed ideal. However, as we talked more about it and also wanted to talk about like choice for staff, so that there was more than one option to look at, I'll give credit to the middle school and Ally had come up with this, she was a committee member, had come up with this, Ally Putnam. And she had said, you know, with so many days in August, sometimes that can be beneficial, right? Like if we have an Act 20 and some of the requirements to roll out, that's, that's good time to use. But in other years, it really would be nice to have more days within the school year as professional development days, where you can take a breath to get together with your colleagues, talk about what's going on in your building and again, maybe make some instructional or planning changes. So there was a second calendar that would have backed off the start into the week before. You see it right now, really the third week of August would have made it into the fourth week of August, but it would have put the last day of school into the second week of June, June 6th. So I mean, I think for a lot of those that are on the committee, it didn't matter a whole lot, we're still having the same number of days. It was just, are you, are we doing more professional development at the beginning of the year and ending earlier? Or are we spreading some of that professional development out and then ending earlier in, in June? And so when that was put up for a vote, it did almost about a 10 percentage point margin, about 54, 55 to 44, 45. And so this is the, at least for now, the recommendation that we're bringing to the, to the board for two years out. Remember, this one we'll look at, I think you get a lot of input as you're, what I would call living a calendar. So as we are living this year's calendar, people have fresh ideas in their mind about what they might wanna change for future calendars. So this one came out ahead, again, I think, and I'm not sure if Melissa and Hope wanna chime in, but I think we had a lot of carryover from one year to the another, to another on who's on the calendar committee. So some of the things that we had to go over, like my first year in the district about, there's, there's always a domino. So because we're on 190.5-day contract, because there's 174.5 student, student contact days, if you move some things around, there's going to be an effect on the other end. So if you wanna get out earlier or you really wanna compact your schedule, there's just a cause and effect there. And so I think this year, there was probably less discussion because people understood the workings of the calendar itself.
One of the, one of the things that I liked about the B calendar, one of the teachers brought up that she would like to start later in August and then put one of those PD days at the end of September in order to sit down with her peers, be able to digest the work that they've gone into to get, you know, the student data and see how that, see how they could take that data to perfect their craft. And I, I just really liked that observation by that, by that teacher, so.
Yeah, and this is the one again, that when staff had a chance to give their input, that they liked at least right now better. But remember, we'll come back again next year because this is two years out. There will be some time to say, is this still what we wanna do? Is this still the best calendar for us? And we won't make major changes, like we're only making one tweak to next year's calendar potentially. So it's fairly stable, but it does give us at least a basis to work off of from the year after that.
Well, I'd like to, to from our end of data observation section, to see if maybe, you know, and encourage that next, you know, next year when we come to, you know, the rubber hits the road for that year's calendar, to make, just to really point out that, okay, so yeah, you gotta stay until June 6th, but look how much further along you could possibly be. You know, we haven't really made the strides that we thought we were gonna make. And maybe if we do this change, it will help, I don't know. But you know, if we carefully follow the data path and see, are we making the strides we wanna make?
At least the process allows us to, to make those changes if necessary when we go forward.
I have no comments on the draft A or B. My only comment was the one that we're proposing for next year. One of the reasons we, they adjusted on two days, we had two, I believe it was two days in that month and they were separated and for, you know, from a parent aspect, I think that's really hard to ask for two separate times in one month. And so from a parent aspect, it's easier to ask for a Friday and a Monday rather than a Monday, Monday in a month, so that's.
That's a great point and, and I'm glad that you brought that up, Hope, because the calendar committee does put on their parent hat. Because ultimately, we don't wanna put too much pressure on parents with, with daycare, especially if it's going to put more on them. Even the, you know, as I called a delayed start this morning, I'm always aware of what that's going to do to parents. And, and I think the calendar committee does that similarly, how much pressure are we putting on parents to find daycare when there is an odd day off during the school year?
Definitely a lot easier to ask for a Friday and a Monday than a Monday and a Monday, so I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thanks to the calendar committee. Moving on, proposal Evansville High School Wrestling Team Overnight Trips.
Kendall comes up, just, there's quite a bit on this agenda for December that is the same kinds of things that we talk about at this time of year. So last year you had approved two day, excuse me, two trips overnight. One was to lacrosse, the other one was to Kana, these are both to lacrosse. Again, you're not gonna see any student cost in this and we are asking for approval tonight, just because we have so few meetings this year. We've got one in November, one in December, one in January. And these, had this been a new idea or concept, but this is something that's been historically approved, so, Kendall?
Yeah, good evening, so.
Also did pretty well at those events last year.
I, I did have to say to Coach Wyler, who was over subbing and alternative ed, that I, when I saw the 72 to nothing score over Boig Turner last night, I had to question if that was the right score, but yes, it was, so.
All right, so yeah, our annual trip to lacrosse for our by-state classic tournament. And then this year, we are looking to replace the Cheesehead, like Mr. Perry said, with the Clash to go back to lacrosse. And then you see a third one on there with the WIA moving the state, the team state tournament from the Field House in Madison to the Lacrosse Center in Lacrosse. I'm just foreshadowing, asking for permission ahead of time if that were to happen because we would find out late February, the turnaround would be quite quick to get board approval on the team state tournament overnight as well.
That's really excellent for WIA do that because it's more central. Seems like it's more central to me. I've had to drive past it a lot of times on the way to Superior, so.
All right, some questions?
Yep, thank you all.
Moving on, presentation of district safety plan and 25, 26 safety drills.
You bet. So two things will have to be approved at this meeting and again, these are always going to come up at this time of year. One thing I tried to do with our safety plan this year, after some feedback that I received last year, is it's, it's quite a long document. So the changes I just highlighted for you, so you could see what those were. We do meet September, October, and November and take probably about an hour or more at each one of those meetings to go through and make sure that there are any changes that need to be made. This year, just to highlight a few of them, obviously you're always gonna have new committee members. One thing that came up that I thought was a great suggestion by the committee members was that we specifically put in this is once it's approved, we will work with Kelly Education, who works with our substitute teachers, to make sure that in the packet of information that they're given for the district, that they have access to this before. That wasn't something that we were focused on before, but we have a lot of great subs here that work, you know, multiple days per week. And so we wanna make sure that they're aware of what would happen in situations like this. Couple of other things, we moved over from the Raptor system to a visitor-aware system. Griffin has really helped with that, Eric is, has helped with that with the building secretaries. It's been a nice switch for us to really integrate a lot of systems, so that had to be updated. We asked for some specific guidance from the Evansville Police Department on window, outside window coverings and what those should look like in event of an emergency. They gave us the recommendation, we put that in. With our new board policies, I also had, the committee had to change some of those policies to update those. We've also talked about the new bullying reporting on the website, so we updated that information as well. Jeff was a part of just some specific language that we were using with our secure practice, which secure is something's happening outside of the building and you wanna make sure that the classrooms are safe inside. Sometimes you might see that if, you know, there's something going on in the neighborhood nearby a school and you wanna make sure the kids are staying within the building themselves, as opposed to evacuate where there's something in the building that we need to leave or exit the building from. We also looked at the go-bags, so when we do evacuate the building, what needs to be in there? And there were some suggestions there. And then finally, there's some parent communication that is recommended, that goes out ahead of a safety drill that the committee had suggested as well. So if this is approved tonight, I do put, I have to go into what's called Microsoft SharePoint, but the Department of Justice and the Office of School Safety has a specific site for Evansville that we then upload those documents to. And they do check from time to time that you are compliant and making sure that you have an updated plan. The other piece of this that you'll see, because there'll be two motions tonight, is our drill documentation. And if you go into these, each of the principals has to follow a template, but it basically has them summarize what drills that they have done already this year, but then also what they learned from those drills and how they might make changes to the future. I mentioned the high school, when I knew Jeff and Kim and the high school staff was going to do some things differently with their safety drill this year, I went over and listened and I really thought it was effective compared to what had happened in the past. I know Kim had gone to Alice Training, probably brought some of those ideas back with her. So two things happened that day. So usually in Alice, you've got, you've got a teacher in the class deciding what's happening with real-time information. So if there was an intruder and that intruder is on the other end of the building, you would be hearing about that. Somebody was following them on a camera, they're announcing that over the PA. And then you've gotta make a decision as a school staff member in a class, what you're going to do. So there was the first option that they could barricade, so they made them look around their classroom, how would you do this? And then Jeff and his staff, some that didn't have a class that hour, were checking doors. And then they had a short time, probably about 10 minutes to debrief, like hey, how would we do this differently or better? If this were a real situation, cause they didn't have a lot of time to practice. And then the second one was where they really wanted the students to evacuate, given the information that they had. So in one drill, they were really practicing both different ideas about, do we barricade, do we evacuate? I know there was debrief with their teachers that are brought back to them, the staff as a whole, just to improve their practices over that. So some of that's coming from our Alice Training and again, some of the ideas that we need to get more realistic with some of our drills. On the other end of the spectrum, Levi and Tris were trying to do age-appropriate activities so that we're not getting the kids scared, but they also know what, what they should do in the event of an emergency. So we'll continue to meet throughout the year, that's why I always put draft on this, because there's things that come up even throughout the school year that will make changes to this and update. Just one other piece, as we actually meet as a committee next Thursday again, we do have Mercy Trauma Center is going to do a walkthrough of our buildings next Tuesday. I think they're gonna have three different former law enforcement officers here. As we, they won't get here right away at the beginning of the day, just because of scheduling conflicts, but they'll be able to see our entrance, entry procedures. We will talk about like bus drop-off, parent drop-off, they will look at our procedures, walk our buildings, be able to give us some ideas about what we could do to improve our safety procedures here. We've done our own audit, like Chief Jones and I did a, did a safety assessment last year, but we both know, Evansville, both know the district, this is kind of an outsider's view of, of things, which I think will be helpful to the district.
Guys, I, I appreciate that you said with Levi and Tris cognizant of the age of the kids and doing things that are appropriate. On the, the Tris PDF on here, it says for the focus areas for next drill, sense of urgency will be added to subsequent drills designed to create a more realistic learning opportunity. So that makes sense to me and it's, the concern I guess is obvious that, you know, you, you need to be cognizant of the young age of the kids. So I'm just curious, how are we gauging and, and balancing, you know, how kids are reacting to this heightened sense of urgency?
Yeah, my answer to that, Ryan, would be oftentimes when we're having those real conversations with kids, like again, when you talk to high school kids and you say like, hey, how is this gonna work or what could we do better? They've got lots of ideas. In fact, some of the kids at the high school are saying, we want to be able to practice this so we have a better sense of what's going on. Even when you get into that third through fifth grade level, as the kids mature and they become more aware of their surroundings and we talk to them as, you know, 11-year-old kids by that point, they have some of their own ideas or some of their own questions about what would happen. And so some of it with their knowledge, if we've done some of these drills and some of it with their curiosity, we want them to start thinking about things and not make it scary so that there maybe is some practice in this when we get into those real-life situations. A lot is dependent on what the kids are ready for and what they're giving us in terms of feedback. A lot of the good ideas that we have come from the kids themselves. In fact, it wasn't that long ago that it came somewhat through the kids where we where we added a glass-breaking device to our go-bags, because if you are in a classroom, would like to be able to get out of the classroom but can't go out in the hallway, those were added, a specific recommendation that we were having conversations with kids with.
That makes sense, and I certainly, I've known like ten, eleven-year-olds who are like that. I mean, my concern, I guess, is of like third graders who are all the way on the other end of the spectrum where it's like, I would think, you know, like Ms. McMoran and teachers would be aware of this, would say like, okay, for this particular kid, we're going to do things a little bit differently. But I'm just wondering if there's, you know, any reassurances we can give if this question were to come up from parents, for instance, that like the school.
Sure, great question. So sometimes like with the high school drill, that's all happening all at the same time. When you get into Levi and Tris, there's certainly more classroom-based, so it can look different in what happens in let's say Mrs. Greby's third-grade classroom to let's say Mrs. Johnson's fifth-grade classroom, for example. Based on the kid's maturity. Good question.
Any other questions? Matt, moving on, presentation of state school report card scores.
Just as Mark comes up here, you've seen the scores, we've talked about them. Feel good about the direction that we're heading in. Again, I anticipate another jump a year from now from where we are now. Hopefully into that exceeds expectations category for the district. What Mark's going to go, yeah, what Mark's going to go over with you today, though, is a little bit more not only about our scores, but how we, how they get to those scores and how they're calculated.
Yes, and that's one thing I do with the staff from time to time this August, when we came in, we brought up, brought in a lot of data points. Some of the priority areas I'm going to speak to tonight, we address those at that time. So when, after looking at the data, they can see how these report cards come to be, and I want to explain that with you as well. There's a series of data points that, that are collected to create these report cards. Not a big surprise, a forward exam, pre-ACT and ACT, also attendance data, graduation rates, all those pieces make up the report card. If you, and I think Mr. Perry linked them, but you could see report cards on pages two and three and four, where it spoke to participation rates in the arts and as well as, you know, AP classes and so on. That doesn't necessarily make up our score, but it's great information for, for the community and families.
Feeds into the categories that do feed into those.
Absolutely, yep, yep. And so there are four priority areas, there are achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on-track to graduation. What you probably noticed me saying is I might sound redundant in the fact that there's overlap with each of these, and it's very much rooted in language arts and math. So next slide page is the achievement score, and in simplest terms, it's looking at that forward, ACT, pre-ACT, how students are scoring in ELA and math. And that is simply the achievement score. The next piece is the growth score, and what it does is it looks at students' growth up to three years across the board. But again, that's in ELA and math in those data points. So that too is something we take a close look at when we look at data and, and our students growing. What you might, a common question is, well, what if a student is scoring really, really high? We kind of spoke to that with our Glimpse data. Schools districts are not dinged for having high scores that don't go higher. But if, if our, if our data is going the wrong direction, that will have a negative effect on our score. And if student scores are going up, that will have a positive effect. The, the third piece is the target group outcomes, and every school district has a target group, and it's made up of the students in the lowest twenty-fifth quartile. This is often referred to as a report card within a report card, because as we look at that target group, we're looking at the achievement data on ELA and math, we're looking at the growth scores of ELA and math, as well as the fourth piece that I haven't mentioned yet, but that's where the, the attendance ties in and the graduation rates. And so that's specific to that group, and that's, that's definitely a great opportunity for our staff to look at groups and, and see how we can help, help them move forward and show growth. And the last piece is on-track to graduation, again, that's very much about attendance and chronic absenteeism. There are two factors, again, back to English and math, that are, that are considered significant predictors of future success, and that's third-grade ELA and eighth-grade math scores. When you think about the conversations we've had about Act Twenty, that goes from grade K to three around ELA, you can see why third grade tends to be that, tends to be that mark. I think in the last meeting, Mr. Perry spoke to this, you know, the old score ranges that are there on your left, and the new score ranges are on the right. So to get to that exceeds category, we would need to get to the seventy-one minimum score. Whereas in the past, it would have been seventy, so we'll see that as we start to look more at our data. And what you see there is blue is what is this year, but you can see some historic information there as well. So you can see our rating categories and, you know, not just across the district, but each school. Levi doesn't take the forward exam, so they get an alternative rating, and it's really going to be satisfactory progress or not. So what Jess does with that is she, she shares some attendance baseline data and sets some goals and reports that to the state. And so that, that's how it comes to be. So we're only point four away from exceeds.
Should say exceeds expectations a little bit.
Almost exceeds.
You're going to be that parent, are you?
Yeah, we could, yeah, we could use the old scale. Well, that's, I, I feel like they did themselves a disservice by saying they were lowering, like they made it seem like we're lowering our standards, when in fact, you have to get a higher score to reach exceeds each category. So they didn't make it very clear.
And it's, it's interesting, whether it's the media or otherwise, what people might hear, because some heard that they, they lowered the expectations and maybe missed the part where they released the expectations. So, and I, I believe we may have shared this last time, but this, this, these two charts show how we, we rank in the Rock Valley Conference as well as the Rock County. And so we're definitely making some progress there, and you can see those, those scores, that seventy-one. You can see those schools ahead of us that are, that are hitting that exceeds mark, and that's, that's where we're aiming to be in the future. And I took a few screenshots directly from the, the report cards, and I, again, I think Mr. Perry shared all those with you, but it speaks to the priority areas, and what you'll notice is that the, the way the weight of achievement and growth fluctuates is rooted in our percentages of, of students identified based on socioeconomic status. So as that percentage goes up, the growth score goes, weight goes up. And if the economically disadvantaged percentage goes down, then the achievement score ebbs and flows with that.
So if you see, I was, that was my question for you, was how do they determine?
Yes, what I, what I, what I wish I had included is the DPI has a nice sliding scale. And so each of those, those pieces had, say, twenty-five percent, and as you increase the percent of economically disadvantaged, you'll see.
See the pie change?
Moves with it, yes, or you go the other way, the achievement.
More heavily.
Yes, yes.
Well, if you have greater number of students in your, percentage of students in your district with economic challenge, then the growth percentage increases?
More heavily weighted, yes.
And as it goes down, then?
The achievement.
Achievement. Well, because we have a relatively low number, then our, our, our achievement levels are pretty well heavily weighted.
Yes, you might see that ebb and flow by building as we get to.
Yes, I see that, I, I've seen, I'm seeing that.
So I have a question, and I, and I know why it's not on here, so I, I get that because they're not Rock Valley. As we start to become a bigger town, I'm just wondering if we can start looking at outside of Rock Valley a little bit more, like Oregon, Stoughton, the.
Like size comparisons?
No, their report cards as well area, like you had on your chart.
Yeah, I think, yeah, a, a, another comparison would be at, remember with negotiations, we have.
Yeah, that, yeah. You know how you had your quarter?
Sure.
I would love to be able to see that, and the only reason is, is because we are competing so much now in those areas. I feel like if I were to move, those are like key areas I would look at, and I think that's why we look at that for teacher negotiations.
Then you're going to get, yeah, you're going to get just locally, some of the same ones, but you'd add in Oregon, you'd add in.
Yeah, just a couple of those, just because I would love to know, where do we actually stand on some of those two? I feel like parents that, most of them are going to work in that probably Madison area. Yeah, I would love to know where we stand against those two.
That would be a pretty easy change.
Yeah, sure.
I, I, that's a great point.
Alright, any other questions or comments for Mark on the scorecards?
So one of the things that a friend of mine brought up is that she was talking with a friend of ours who's district administrator at a different school, and they also said that their middle school hit it out of the park this year too compared to rest of their district. And so I, one of the things that I wanted to see, well, how did we do, how did like the state do in middle school? Is it because like the whole state suddenly decided that they're going to teach middle school to the?
Can I ask a question that might help with that? Forward math changed how they calculate their score last year. So the way forward exam for at least eighth grade scored was different than previous years. So that may play a part as to why there was a bigger boost, because they changed the way they scored things.
Only, only for eighth grade?
I don't know. Bet I don't know, I had an eighth grader.
When I brought up the growth score and they use the phrase up to three years, sometimes because they might make an adjustment in the way that tests are scored, they, they might look at two years to find that consistency.
Well, the last ten years, you can't hardly find ten years in a row that they sounded the same way, but.
He's having a great year, I guess.
Actually, next, next month, Melissa, I will have some information on NextPath and something that they just came out with within the last three weeks that help us look at in a very clear way, comparison statewide, not, because that's, there's a lot of data there. And before, there wasn't a way to download that data into a spreadsheet and make sense of it. And now NextPath has actually done that, so I'll report on that out next month.
When I was looking at the, certainly our, if you look at J.C. McKenna data, you can see the achievement data, we are ahead of the state, but in the growth data, we're not. So like it should offset, right, a little bit in terms of, oh, doesn't seem like those scores are sufficiently different to mitigate middle schools stand up and shout. But it's, it is just, it's just an interesting observation to me.
I will say as a, as a middle school principal at one point, I found it, when you would look at who was scoring well, elementary's, high school's, middle school, oftentimes it was the most difficult to get higher scores in the middle school as compared to the high school and elementary school. So yeah, some of that is some of the changes that has been impacted, which I do think makes it a little bit more fair, because it was really, when you would look at like some of the best scores in middle school, even in like a very competitive Dane County, you might get some scores in the low eighties, which were pretty high. But then you would see like elementary schools mid-eighties, or some of the high schools mid-eighties as well.
Alright, I think that's it, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and move on to discussion on the district's open enrollment.
This is another one that we've, we bring back annually, so when Janessa and I were talking a little bit about a presentation, you've seen a lot of this before, so she probably won't go into, into a lot of detail. What I wanted to bring up here is we do have plenty of space for regular education students coming in from outside areas into, into Evansville. With special education, last year alone, if you'll remember, we had two-point-eight million dollars transferred from our general fund, Fund Ten, into Fund Twenty-seven to pay for special education. As a note on that, remember our ask for the referendum was two-point-nine million dollars. So there is a lot of money going into a special education. And one of the things that Janessa will kind of skip up to is our recommendation that we have no caps on regular education spaces, we have, we do have the space for that, but that we have no spaces open, really K-12 plus our specials, that would be occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, early childhood, and our eighteen-to-twenty-one program. Because, and I think Janessa will speak to this, our special ed staff, our EAs are stretched to their max right now. So to, and we're doing our best with our kids that we have living right here in our district. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense from our administrative position to say, we'll take on more challenges from kids that don't live in our own district. So with that, I'll pass it over to Janessa for maybe a few more details.
Yeah, so the presentation is pretty similar to last year, so I'd just like to bring that like foundational knowledge to the board, because it's not like a language that we speak at every meeting. But I won't go into as much depth, because we really dug into that a lot last year. But just to kind of define what space is, I just want to verify that space is not an actual location. It's, it's kind of the services aligned to a student. So that does include the direct and the indirect services. So we don't look at it in terms of special education seats, we look at it in terms of the space as in the services. We're just going to go kind of quick through all these things, Paige, so keep on going. Looking at indirect services, so you can go to the next one. That's the IEP management, it's also your evaluations, it's your communication, and it's your family engagement and involvement. The difference between caseload and workload again, so caseload being the number of students that this, this teacher is working with versus workload, which is like the work involved per student. So we weight those things differently, we use our matrix to do that. So this is what the matrix looks like, we then score it, and it provides us a weight for that student that's then calculated per grade level. So this is kind of that, that slide that shows our current data. You'll see it broken down by building, but also by grade. This year, I really want to emphasize the building totals, because we've had to be creative in how we're servicing our students. We do have some grade levels that are a bit disproportionate in terms of the number of students that are receiving services. So we do have case managers crossing over grade levels. So while some really have one case manager aligned to each grade level, we do kind of cross over to kind of make things more equitable. So if you tally them all up, you can see kind of at the bottom where the total for that building would be versus what the, what the workload max would be. And again, this is for next school year, so everything is, is bumped down to one or moved over one year, and then take it in consideration one additional student caseload. So that's that extra twelve points, which is the medium score for each student. So for Levi, for Tris, you'll also see that there's double the amount of workload max in that fourth grade level, because we do move over that additional special education teacher. Right now, it's that third grade level, we've kind of talked about second to third grade being a big bubble this year in the district. So we have a lot of services aligned to that grade level, that's why we have two case managers, two special ed teachers assigned to that grade level. One will then move forward into that fourth grade to move alongside with that cohort of students. So again, looking at the building totals, you'll see the discrepancy between what we would project as our workload max versus what we will have as a workload total.
Can I pause for a second, because that seems crazy at Tris, like that's a huge discrepancy. Like what do we need to do about that?
Put a cap on our open enrollment.
Okay, I mean, but is there more, because like that's without.
Have already.
It's it. Yep, so currently, if you look at that fourth grade level, that's currently what we have in third grade. Um, I will say that we feel it. It is. It is our job, but it's becoming harder and harder every year to continue servicing students, the the needs do seem to become more intensive. Um, especially at the younger ages and that just kind of follows through. So really appreciative to the board, you did allow me to um hire another special ed teacher for that grade level, so that's why we do have two. Um, last year, you had me start that person, so she was able to get kind of acclimated in that third grade level. And now is at that third grade level again this year and she'll kind of move on or that F T E will move on with her.
So you're down how many people right now?
Um, great question, um so we have a couple of students who are newly qualified. That will need some additional adult support, so in terms of certified staff, we are um fully staffed.
Which is how many, remind me?
About case managers?
Case managers.
Certified teachers?
So five, eight, twelve.
Thirteen plus high school.
Yeah, sixteen, that's just special ed teachers, then we have. And speech and language, so you're looking.
And then how many E L A teachers should be approved? E A, sorry.
Um, we're up to it's district wide, there's fifty-one EAs in the district at this point.
Uh, special ed EAs? I think for EAs, we're looking closer to thirty-five.
Oh, that could be total, but.
We're fully staffed, why are these like, how could we be fully staffed if the numbers? That's exactly, I guess.
My question, what would it take to have those numbers equal? Have the caseload.
I'm not trying to challenge you or like.
I appreciate the question, I really do, the the.
Yes, I'm just trying to understand, I'm sorry.
No, so if you look, uh really great questions, I appreciate it because really what. What I would ultimately be asking for is a hiring more staff. So in terms of certified staff, we are at capacity in terms of the amount of workload that each. Staff member is taking on, if you look at the middle school, that's about sweet spot right now, where we've got four case managers. One that kind of flexes around that that helps out, so I think that they are feeling um the most capable of fulfilling their services. And still going home and feeling good about their job, um the rest are really struggling, just to be completely honest, uh uh you know, except for the high school, I think. By the time they get to the high school, we're really um carrying back services, but in terms of Levi and Tris, it's been it's been tricky. Um, especially because we've had a many students we weren't expecting to have disabilities kind of coming to us without any prior. Um, services and so then that's the E M L S S process that we have to follow, so that's kind of the. Um, get to know the student, put in some interventions, see if they're responding to interventions, if they're not, then. Again, there might be a referral to special education, that in itself takes another sixty some days, we then have to meet. And at some point, we have to hire, um hiring has been in terms of EAs because so many of these students have required some additional adult support. Um, hiring EAs has been tricky, however, we have hired a few this this year that are absolutely phenomenal and very impressed with them.
But EAs take off that that case, I guess is what I'm asking, though, they don't, though.
They do not.
So I guess this goes back, I think I asked this last year. I I I and I think you answered this and I totally understand, the EAs are helping out in the day to day. That's needed for the support with the teachers, right, in the classroom, but it's not taking off caseload. Workload, sorry, that these staff are feeling.
So it's only special education staff that increase the workload math?
Right, so I'm seeing a five eighty-nine to a two twenty-five and a five seventy-seven to a four hundred. And you're telling me these people here are feeling the burn? Not, right, so I'm just.
I think this is projected, so I think we gotta address that, this is just saying we shouldn't accept any more open enrollment. That's what I'm saying, so this is projected, so yeah, going into the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, we're gonna have to hire some people based on these numbers.
So the the only difference between what this is. And next year's projections is that I add twelve, so if you're looking at. Fourth grade, I mean, really, I'm adding. So yeah, so it's 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 not. But I will say we have had way more than an average of one student per building this year or on average, you know, three to four students per building. Um, so anyway, to your point, we potentially need more special education teachers. Yes, are we making it work? Absolutely, and we will continue to do so, but finding certified staff is is very difficult.
We can hope Janessa's projection's wrong. I mean, it's one or the other, right?
I I wish it was an error in math because there was a day that I came up here and we were in line.
I'm sorry, I I know I'm prolonging the conversation, I'm just a little. Some a little.
Two to one ratio between workload and what does it call it? Workload max that should be associated with that number of persons doing the work. There is a fundamental flaw in the whole system. And I know that this is not what the what the addressing is. And solving the problem is not going to be. Done by not letting people open enroll into the district because you know what, then they'll move in if they really want. And then you got the Dallas advocates saying, now what are you gonna do? So what we need to do is solve the problem, not put a patch on it, so that what do we need to do? Say it's talking into the air, say, just put together a plan that says this is in order for us to properly. Properly serve these children, the needs that they need, this is the staffing we need.
That's we need seven or eight special education teachers to make our workload max match our.
But that so that's a conversation for later.
This is the projected, so.
Janessa wants to come back and ask for more staff.
Can I ask, um are other districts in the area making a similar decision that they presumably are facing similar struggles? They're also not accepting.
Yeah.
Do you wanna handle that one?
Yeah, really good question, I don't know of any district that is allowing open enrollment in for students with disabilities. I was um connecting with our legal counsel from Borben and Clark around a specific open enrollment question that I had. And he and he was asking about our proposal and what we're planning to do, um just to get some of his insight. And he said there's not one district that he's working with that is not putting um. Not allowing any students in that have disabilities, so every district is putting a cap on. Having no space available.
Is that why we're uh we're finding students that enrolled in that. Um, haven't been properly vetted for whether or not they need services?
Yeah, um and that's a really good question too, so because because districts are now putting caps on. And not allowing students with disabilities into districts, there are loopholes in the system and so parents can simply just not. Um, find consent for placement or they can revoke consent for placement, which then. Makes the the process null and void in terms of special education, so then that student is looked at as a regular education student. And now they are allowed into any district, um where they would most likely receive a referral and then the process would continue again. So it really just passes the burden on to another district, but it is a loophole.
I recently read that the state is not giving us our forty percent valuation that they said they were going to.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna touch on that just real briefly, Eric, what you think it's gonna be with a bear projection too?
Sure, they're thinking it's gonna be between thirty-eight and thirty-nine percent, not the forty-two that they had said. And the first round of uh of aid that came out was at thirty-five percent. So that's even more of a reason to think it's gonna be a lot less.
So in terms of needs in the district, I guess, just to put this in perspective, because if you can go back, Paige, there was. There was a time when I did stand up here and I was proud of our workload maxes because they were below um what we currently had. And so we were welcoming students into the district and that is not the case any longer. And I will say that in terms of our enrollment overall, we are seeing a slight decline in our o- in our enrollment. Since I've started here, it's kind of gone down slightly each year, but our number of students with disabilities has increased and that's just sheer number. If you look at the needs that are involved with these students, they are incredibly comprehensive and involved and intensive. And so it is not, it is not um a a support in reading or they need classroom support. Or they just, you know, they're below grade level in math, it is math, reading, writing, it's executive functioning, it is trauma in the background. It is behavioral, it is social emotional learning, it is kind of everything around the student. Um, it is safety, it is sometimes even bathroom, and so there is a lot that surrounds these students. And so again, that's why I really emphasize the importance of the workload because the number just does not justify the needs that are associated. With students right now, um but our staff is incredible and they take it on and and these and these students are not just educated, they are loved in this district. So I am I am proud of the staff that we have, um at one point, maybe we will be coming back with some. Additional recommendations for staffing to increase, but at this point, I do think we have systems that we need to. You know, kind of make sure are more robust and and that we're really making sure that there's universal supports in place for all of our students. But it's it's bigger than um it's bigger than it's bigger than this conversation.
Bigger than that district too.
So anyway, my recommendation would be that we continue to place a um cap for no special education, so can you go back, Paige? Um, so that we do not have enough space in any of our programming, so that would be any student with a disability. Um, as well as related service, if you look all the way down, you'll see P T does have a little bit of wiggle room. It's very rare that we would get one a student that has um like an orthopedic impairment primarily without any other services. However, there is a little wiggle room there.
Any other questions for Janessa?
Yeah, this will be a vote in January, so.
If not, we'll move on to policy. Thank you, Janessa.
Just an update, we had briefly talked about this um at our last meeting, but I wanted to put it into writing for the board. Recommendation of Dr. Onsager, now that now that our new uh policies have rolled over. There is an update that came out in the summer, thirty-four point two, and he said it would be easier to wait till thirty-five point one. Comes out in the spring and then handle them both together. Um, it would be similar to what the policy committee has worked on in terms of workload in the past by doing those both together. And for again, just those that I haven't been part of the policy committee, um when those come out, I'll meet with Dr. Onsager. He'll give me the overview, um I'll make some uh initial recommendations on the policies where there are choices. Uh, depending on what kinds of things they're asking, so if it's about curriculum, I would touch base with Mark, if it was about special education. Um, I would touch base with Janessa and so on, and then the committee meets, we go over those uh choices so that they're happy with those. And then we bring in Dr. Onsager, who actually then informs that committee, you know, here's everything that you're seeing and the reasons behind them. And then, of course, we get our first read and then second read with the board and an approval, so I would guess by um next summer. Will be com- again, completely up to date with two new updates. Um, there are some real specific things that I know that we've talked about, um Eric has added that list. Um, as he went through a food service audit, uh there's some things that they that D P I needs to see, like a visiting student. Um, language, what we do when we have a student that might come through the line, that's not a part of our district. Um, another one that we'll have to address is um federal capitalization thresholds, that used to be five thousand dollars, it's now ten thousand dollars. Have to have that reflected, so some of those are fairly minor, but will be added to our uh updates coming up.
I did notice, we were looking through policy, I think, at our our uh district administrator evaluation. It seems like we do have some repetitive policies around board stuff.
Sure.
There's no questions on policy, we'll move on to finance, uh November financials.
I'm gonna go real quick here, since I know uh the meeting's been going on here, so. The first thing I wanna kind of talk about is our bank account, um our bank account is, I guess artificially inflated. Because we did get that check from the insurance company, um so I wanna make sure that we're all aware that those funds will eventually be going out. To Pioneer, um but in the meantime, it's helping with our low time of the year is November, December and then part of January. Until we get our uh state funding, so it's actually been a uh God sent that we have that money right now, um so then we'll get through.
Take the money out of the.
The line of credit. Exactly.
Actually, our uh insurance payment on our roof kinda helped us out in a similar way.
Is there a way to figure out our projected billing cycle and if we have extra money, you know, invest it for a short period of time?
We would, but I don't know if the um amount that we would get on it would be worth the the time of doing it.
Then encrypt it.
I just didn't know if, you know, if it was. What was the check you check that came in?
It was a four point one million.
Yeah, I mean, I was just saying, thinking if it's two or three million dollars and you invest that for two or three months, that three percent interest is.
And that's what we're getting about that right now, so and then the feds, I thought were uh not going to cut any more rates. Uh, because of unemployment and a couple other items, and then they 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 cut the rate by a quarter point, so yeah. But no, it that's a good thought and I actually looked at at what our rates are and it's it's so close with with P M A to be able to move funds then get. That uh, yeah, it the the interest rate. So, um, the other thing is I'm seeing a shift, uh I've talked with Mark Schwartz about this quite a bit. In uh our purchases, uh especially when around curriculum, instead of going more textbooks, uh hard, you know, physical things. Uh, we're seeing we're seeing a switch to more software, so inside of our our budget, you would see me doing some budget amendments to reflect that. So I'll just kinda give you a heads up on that, that's what I have for you, if there are any questions for me.
I guess I have a question, um the check that we received for four million, is that in the revenues? Skyward report somewhere and I'm missing it?
Is it a really big check?
It just says like fiscal year to date. Maybe that's just not, uh that can't be calculated, right, because like the grand revenue totals fiscal year to date is only two million.
That might have been a timing issue of when we deposited. Oh, yeah, because it was deposited in uh December.
So it's not, okay.
Eric, I have a question, um when will you get forecast numbers for insurance?
Usually those are in the springtime. March into April.
Any other questions for Eric? All right, now, yeah, thank you, Eric, now moving on to business action item. Um, first up is the approval of Evansville High School wrestling team overnight trips, I'll entertain a motion.
I think a motion to approve the overnight Evansville High School wrestling team trip, the by-state classic tourney in lacrosse from December twenty-eight. Thirty, twenty twenty-five and the national lacrosse Wisconsin from January first through third, twenty twenty-six.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a second, any discussion?
I have a question, this doesn't include state.
Right, just. Right, just because we that team state, we're not sure if we would qualify. Um, at this point, I didn't mention this, the new policies don't make us take it, but because we've done it by past practice. Um, if it does look like that's happening, I will bring that back.
Good question, any other discussion? Uh, let's vote.
Crystal, who is the second?
Motion carries six zero, next up for approval is the district safety plan, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the safety plan for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion? Vote. Let's vote. Motion carries six zero. There's another uh enter action item to entertain a motion on the Act one forty-three requirement checklist.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Act one forty-three requirement checklist.
Where's our second? Second, any discussion?
That checklist.
Uh so part of that is um that drill documentation. And at the bottom of those drill documentation, it also talks about our um staff training that we do and then also about um, there's one more piece that I'm forgetting off the top of my head. There's another piece in there that covers everything the D P I needs, or actually the Office of School Safety needs.
Any other discussion? Now, let's vote. Motion carries six zero. Next is consent. Does anybody want anything removed? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent items.
I'm going to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, let's vote.
I'm sure, do we have that audit?
No.
Motion carries six zero. Next is the future agenda. Does anybody want anything changed?
And remember, the audit will be pushed too. January, yeah, they. Seen them this late, they are really even pushing their own D P I deadline, which is Monday, so.
I think a lot of districts are being dropped in front of their auditors and no.
Yes, so Eric, they're only aware of two school districts.
Excuse me.
Audits, one is Johnson Block and one is Whipley. Um Eric was aware of a couple of districts that no longer can get Johnson Block to do their audit, so Whipley will have to.
Nice to know. Why is that?
Eric, do you know, do you know why some of those uh the the firms that do do school audits are dropping some of those schools at this point?
They're just trying to get out of it. Um then there's other companies that are coming in from Illinois. Uh I know that are trying to pick up the the pieces of it. So it's it's a staffing is probably part of it.
Alright, let's take a five-minute break before going to executive session.